Good morning and welcome. I would like to call this meeting of the Parks, Arts, Transparency and Education Subcommittee to order. Will staff please note that all board members or all council are present with the exception of Councilman Valenzuela? Councilman Nowakowski is on the phone. I don't have any call to the public. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes of February 24, 2016 meeting? I have a... First motion, I need a second motion.
I'll second.
All those agreeing with the February 24, 26 meeting, please say aye.
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 Ayes passed by three. For those watching at home, the items related on the agenda are on the screen. You can contact my office at (602) 262-7447 if you like more information. Items four through seven are information only, but staff is here to answer questions. Any of my members of the Subcommittee have any questions from items four through seven? Alrighty. With a no, we can move to the next part of the agenda. Items eight through 10 are for consent actions. There are no presentations, but staff is available for questions. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda eight through 10? Thank you, Wery. Do you need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Move to approve.
Can I object at that?
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All the ayes have passed. Item number 11 is for information discussion and possible action. Thank you, Gail. It's about the artist design contract for the Sky Harbor Airport Terminal 3 modernization of public art.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, thank you. We are happy to present this proposal for a design contract for James Carpenter. Ed Lebo, who's Director of our Public Art Program, will lead us through a short presentation and will answer questions afterwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Council. This is a follow-up to approval of a concept contract that council approved last May, and it was to develop a concept for the Terminal 3 modernization. And this proposal, whoops, let me go back one. This proposal is for a full design contract based on the concept James Carpenter has developed for $230,000. And through that, he would work with the entire aviation design team and city partners to develop this idea with construction documentations, engineering, and all the rest that goes, and able to build it. The modernization is transforming the Terminal 3 by removing all of the concrete cladding that has been part of it all these years and opening it up to these remarkable views of the city. This is a recent view out without the windows in place, but you can see what future passengers will enjoy through here. Looking north there, you can see Piesta will peak, and if you look west, you'll be able to see the downtown. This, quite frankly, is what all of us have considered to be really the great art of the West, the views, the light. And the reason that James Carpenter was initially contracted to develop a concept is that he's a MacArthur Fellow of 2004, itself also known as the MacArthur Genius Award, and his particular genius is working with light and materials that bring all kinds of wonderful experiences to travelers. This is in the New York subway system, the Fulton Center. These works in the upper left is Singapore, and on the lower left is the Federal Courthouse Ceremonial Courtroom right next door to us. He's done work here in the West, and his inspiration all along has been using the light that we have. You will see that the location for this proposed contract and spot for the idea is right there on the North Concourse Bridge. This concourse is going to, and the bridge will connect the terminal to the gateways on the north end of the airport. It's right there. It's highly visible if you come around the turn from the west. And so this will be the location. You'll be able to see it from the inside and also from the outside. Right now, this bridge is cluttered with all kinds of good TSA equipment. In the future, that is going to change. This is as if you were crossing the bridge from the terminal to the north. On the right-hand side in the red box, you have a section that's going to be walled off for folks that's going to convey baggage to and from the airplanes to the terminal. On the left in the green is the section that Carpenter has developed his concept for. Right now, that's a glass cladding on that western wall, and Carpenter thought, and the team thought, wouldn't it be great to take the light that is coming in through that window and do something that is as extraordinary as these great landscapes in the West? And his idea was to develop a sculptural wall made of optical aluminum that could also have colorations. And so what you're looking at there are these optical aluminum cells, hexagons, that focus the light. They'll be placed against a etched glass. In other words, a sort of a fogged glass, so that you would do two things. One, you would, I guess, reduce the brightness of the light coming in, but also create an experience out of that light. And that experience would stretch the entire length of this 194-foot walkway. As part of the contract, Jamie Carpenter would work with the entire team to develop the finishes, that is, the terrazzo through here, the walls and the ceilings, so that as folks cross from the terminal to the gateways, it would be like some of those Skytrain crossings that we've done in the past, really sort of a calming experience for folks walking through. To vary the experience, he's decided to use not just one size opening for these hexagonal optical aluminum cells, but a variety of them. And that variety will enable him to create these patterns as you walk along and kind of a flow of light coming in and out. So all of this was part of his design concept. The aviation team and design team that he's been working with is delighted and very supportive of this. It would vary the experience and give passengers really sort of a beautiful, I think, way to experience the light in the West. And with that, that's the proposal, $230,000 design contract. We would expect that design to take place over the coming year. Future construction of this, we anticipate design or construction and installation would be approximately $2 million. And with that, I'd be delighted to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think it's remarkable. It'll be great to see just the modernization of the airport and be able to have those sights or be able to look out. It would be wonderful. It also would add light in a very dark area, and we might as well maximize our sunlight. And so, really appreciate the modernization of the concourse. Are there any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Oh, you didn't say anything.
Well, you didn't ask about no.
Okay. Well, I was gonna, I figured it was no, so I was just gonna go.
I didn't inform you. I might surprise you.
No, I'm not. You might. You're absolutely right.
All right. I appreciate though.
I was just gonna say two to one, but you can say no. Go ahead.
No.
Okay. No. Two to one. Thank you. Sorry, Wery.
It's almost symbiotic relationship. Crossing party line.
Oh, gosh. Thank you. Item number 12, nonprofit facility operator update. I do have a card on this item. Why don't we have the presentation and then Flo?
Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee, today we're here to just bring you an update on the nonprofit facility operators in the Parks and Recreation Department facilities. As you remember, the history of how we got to this point, there were budget reductions starting back in 2008. And at the community input, at the public budget meetings, there was really still a need and a desire to have these facilities open. And so, through a creative idea of having nonprofits operate our facilities, many individuals stepped forward. And so we have, initially, we had 11 operating agreements at the 11 facilities. One has changed since that point, the South Phoenix Youth Center. The organization who originally was selected for that was not able to maintain, and so the Parks and Recreation Department staff continued to run that after they left that facility. Whoops. I touched the wrong button. I'm sorry. My bad. Yeah. All right. So, the types of partnerships that we do have, we have recreation and teen centers. We have the arts and cultural facilities. We have environmental centers and some outdoor facilities, like the Horse Lovers Facility. And then we have other nonprofit partnerships, such as museums and historical facilities, that we previously had relationships with and they continued. Again, this brings us to 10 now that we currently have in the actual shuttered facilities, because many of those other groups were running our facilities earlier. This is a list of our nonprofit operators that we have in those particular areas that were shuttered because of the budget reductions. And we have 15 total partnerships with nonprofits. And many of those folks are here today. We have seven groups here today. We have Grant Park folks here, and if you can wave your hand, I won't name them all. We have Horse Lovers folks. We have Central Park, Camp Colly, Phoenix Center for the Arts, Schimer, and Tovraya Castle Society, the Carrera Society. So they're here all today. Again, we've had great success with our partners, keeping those facility open, facilities open, so that we can continue to provide the services and programs that are listed here. And again, there's a wide variety, you can see, all the way from guided hikes, equestrian activities, the visual and performing arts that you typically associate with Parks and Recreation, but also some STEM activities and also teen programs and other academic support for the various youth. This is one of the things that we're requiring now with our nonprofits, is that they actually acknowledge that the Parks and Recreation Department and the City of Phoenix are their partners, right? And so, we had a little bit of difficulty with that because we didn't really set an expectation. The first five years that we were in this, you know, it was new to us, and so we were trying to figure out, you know, exactly what to do. And so we put the information out there. We had great success, but we're gonna build on that and make our success even stronger. So we'll be listed as the owner and they'll be listed as the operator. And this is one example that we recently just entered into with South Phoenix, or South Mountain Environmental Center. Jackie Johnson, who's sitting next to me today, she has now taken over the responsibility of making sure that we're consistent. And that's one of the things, we didn't have some consistency with some of our operators and the reports that we were getting. So Jackie's gonna have that responsibility to make sure that happens for us. Community impact, obviously, the health, safety, and wellness of the community, preservation of our natural resources, the community access to these facilities, as well as educational enrichment. But the other thing it does is it lets us leverage our resources and so that we can continue to provide services across the city where somebody has a specialty and can come in and help us there. We were able to leverage that support. And so our facilities are open to the public and are available to the community. Here's one example, again, of an arts perspective. They took some good programming, enhanced it, expanded services, and have the ability now to access resources that maybe we couldn't to leverage with us. Maybe they can get grants that the city can't get or other funding. So again, that's one of the other benefits. Here's an example, again, of an equestrian situation, you know, again, something very unique. We have a lot of diverse activities in our Parks and Recreation System, and what they were able to do is continue to provide a higher level of service and hours because we'd had so many budget reductions. We were down to one or two or three days, and so this way it can be opened more frequently, and it was a big help to us. Central Park Recreation operated by Phoenix Day, again, providing opportunities for youth in the community through positive activities and programs. And then again, just the list of all of our other partners, you can see the very vast diversity in our programs and our facilities that we have. So this is just another opportunity to show you the great things. I mean, such beautiful pictures, the Japanese Friendship Garden, the Irish Cultural Center, and the historic Tovraya Castle and Rosen House. And then, you know, even though it's maybe not something that everybody goes to see, you know, lending our history and, you know, giving a memory to our, how our founding fathers and where some of those are buried, the Pioneer and Military Memorial Park, and so that's another one of our facilities. The very last slide I have for you today is, this is the most recent example. We're having a grand opening on April 16th. You'll be receiving invitations for this. It was just announced yesterday that this will be the opening day for the Phoenix Center for the Arts up in the north part of town at the Thunderbird Art Center. And so, taking that facility that has been vacant since last January and reopening it for arts, as we know, the arts is a very popular program. What we've heard from this particular operator is many of their folks came from north, and so this allows them to maybe not travel as far. And then in front of you, you have a package of a variety of different brochures and flyers that talk about the various programs that are offered at these facilities. And again, just to give you a range, many of the, many of the opportunities are free. When there are charges, they are moderate. They are not really, they're not very high, with the exception of areas where maybe there's an arts program that's on the higher end because they have to use a kiln or they have to have special kinds of paints, things of that nature, that are just more and more expensive in general. That's why those classes are a little bit more expensive. So with that, I will be able to answer any questions that you have. And again, I just wanna publicly thank all of our partners. We have great partners. We would not have been able to open these facilities without the partners that we have here today, and so I just wanna express my appreciation to them and thank them for being here today.
I would like to thank the partners for being here, and this demonstrates a public-private partnership and how we really work together and collectively and collaboratively in the sense of, I have been able to personally experience many of these programs due to my children and finding camps during the summer and different activities. And/or I've sat on some of these boards that are here, part of this. But, and one of them, I sit with Linda Brill, who is a governing board member, and she is from Grant Park, and so she still continues to contribute to that area. And so, I know the importance of these type of programs with a public-private partnership. So I wanna thank everybody that's here, that took their time to be here, and thank you for doing your great work. Anyone have any questions? No? I have a card, I know. Flo Eckstein, President of Camp Colly Foundation? Colly?
Colly.
Colly.
Listen. Thank you very much. Is this on? Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the City Council. I'm Flo Eckstein, and I'm a longtime city volunteer, former Parks and Recreation Board Chairman, and I'm now President of the Camp Colly Foundation. And R501(c)(3) enjoys a three-way partnership with the City of Phoenix and the Arizona Parks and Recreation Fellowship to support Camp Colly. Our foundation began 12 years ago when Jim Colly had decided that a nonprofit would be effective in raising money to build capital improvements at the camp. Then eight years ago, as the recession hit, the city asked us if we would also raise money for operating funds, and we have done both of those things. And our funders are local businesses, individuals, and foundations that believe in our mission. The city, all these years, has retained responsibility for the property maintenance costs. Camp Colly helps some of our most at-risk youths help to learn to make good decisions and experience success, develop self-confidence and resilience, and build healthy relationships. Campers go backpacking, canoeing, mountain biking, horseback riding, stargazing, and observe wildlife, things that they're not able to do in their homes in Phoenix's urban area. And we also, as of last year, initiated a program to provide work experience for disconnected older teens to support their growth and to responsible, employed adults. I know that you will soon be considering the 2016, 2017 budget, and I want to ask you, as you go through that difficult process, to continue to fund the maintenance costs at Camp Colly while we raise money for continuing to build out the camp and the operating costs. And I thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Councilman Nowakowski?
You know, first of all, I just really wanna thank all the nonprofits that really came to us and said, you know, we wanna keep these rec. centers and community centers open and alive, that there's a need within our community, especially all the youth at risk that are out there. These programs are keeping our kids off of drugs, out of gangs, and really pushing them to go through a higher education, to graduate to high school, but not just high school, but to continue to college. And I really wanna thank you all for your hard efforts and really stepping up when the City of Phoenix was going through a hardship. We were looking at a over $200 million deficit, and it was hard. It was really hard. Our employees took a cut of 6%. Our centers were being closed, and it was the community that came together. And I call that the Team Phoenix approach, where we come together with solutions. And once again, thank you and anything we can do to continue these programs. I can tell you that I've been involved with the DUC program at Smith Park, which is just a great program. It's the Downtown Urban Community Kids Program where they bring mentors from different high schools. And when I was there, there were young men from Brophy that were mentoring the kids from that neighborhood, that patio that's right there. And it was truthful. The young men from Brophy were really getting a lot, were getting educated from these young kids, and they were just amazed that individuals in the City of Phoenix are living in the way that they're living in, in the conditions that they're living in. And they said, you know, once we grow up, we want, our graduate, we wanna come back to this community and give more. And it's just amazing how it goes both ways. The service to others isn't just to the individuals that are serving, but the ones that are serving are actually getting rewarded back from those students. And, you know, the Phoenix Center of the Arts, a great program, also within my district, all kinds of different programs from arts and crafts to hip-hop to you name it, they have it. The other thing is Grant Park with their basketball, midnight basketball. A lot of our children, especially in the summertime, there's nothing for young kids to do. You can go to the movies so many times before you break your parents' wallet, right? And, you know, they need alternatives. There's no, there's no teen bars or nightclubs in downtown Phoenix or within Phoenix, and there's nowhere for young people after dark to hang out. And sometimes they have to end up going to these backyard parties where they end up getting in trouble. So we have facilities like Grant Park with midnight basketball and the Wilcoxes that have been leaders within this community and understand the needs for children to stay busy and to stay out of trouble also. So once again, thank you all for what you do out there in the community, for all your programs. If we can help out in creating, I know, scholarships to help offset some of the cost for the programs for the young people that live around that area, because I know it costs money to run these programs, but that's one of the things I like to look at is, how do we make sure that the kids that can't afford to maybe go into some of the programs that are being offered here, that we can figure out a way to create some type of scholarship or offset or maybe even have some scholarships for a dozen or so kids so they can participate in all these wonderful programs? Thank you once again.
Anyone else? Well, thank you. Thank you for the great report. Item number 13 is Phoenix Office of Arts and Cultures FYI 2015-2016 Capital Projects and Programming Update.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, we are here to give you an overview of the Phoenix Office of Arts and Cultures capital plan, which is in two parts, the cultural facilities bond program and the public art program. Our office manages a cultural facilities program of capital improvements, which over the past 30 years helped to fund renovations at existing facilities like the Phoenix Art Museum, Phoenix Theater, and Arizona Science Center, and to build new facilities for the opera, ballet, black theater troupe. Now, most of these projects have been completed. The program currently has available two items, nearly $44,000 for upgrades at the Carver Museum, and $1,074,000 is currently available toward development of a cultural center to benefit the Latino community. Another $302,000 is not available for this project until fiscal year 2020. Part two of our CIP budget is the public art plan. This is the 30th anniversary of the Percent for Art program established in 1986 through the adoption of the Percent for Art ordinance. 1% of the city's capital improvement program funds are invested to enhance the design and experience of public infrastructure buildings and spaces through public art. Public Art Director Ed Lebo will update you on where we are with this year's plan, but I wanted to make a note that next month at this meeting, we'll present for your approval next year's five-year plan. Ed?
Thank you, Gail, Madam Chair, and members of the Council. This year's public art plan, approved by council last year, is 49 projects for $11.5 million. Right now, there are 34 of those projects budgeted in this fiscal year for $9.8 million, and we have 22 of those 34 projects in motion for approximately $8.7 million. There are 15 projects in the art plan that are out in the future. They represent those reprogrammed bond funds that continue to roll out in the future. And as Gail mentioned, we'll be back next month to update you with next year's art plan. This is the five-year history of funding in the program, just to give you a sense of the context. In 1116, or the 2011, we had about $16.9 million. Currently, there's $11.5, and that decline represents the decline in available bond funds throughout the city. Once again, we take a penny out of every dollar that goes toward capital improvements, and that becomes what is available for the arts. We've had some notable recent completions of projects. Pueblo Grande entrance has given a really a wonderful new face to the only national historic landmark in the City of Phoenix, and makes it a lot easier for folks on mass transit to walk straight in from the 44th Street Station to that site. Desert Sky Transit Center was also completed, and that too provides really a beautiful new place for folks to wait for the bus and maybe meet friends as well. There are recently approved contracts that have gone before this committee and also council. The South Mountain Loop 202 project, which is about to begin design. Jodi Pinto was the artist approved for that. And then we have two artists, Anne Morton and Chris Lee, as part of the 27th Avenue Artist Residency at the Solid Waste Management Facility, and that also is about to get underway. There are major projects in design and construction, some in different phases of completion, but we have the Avenida Rio Salado project, which is moving ahead, and that will bring some, we expect to come to council in the coming months for construction approval on that. And then we also have the Arterial Canal Crossings, a major new project to improve crossings and the safety of crossings along the Grand Canal through central Phoenix. There's also a project that, if you've driven along Dunlap Avenue near the Deer Valley Water Treatment Plant, the wall has been enhanced, and there will be landscaping on the way and also bus shelters that will be added to that stretch. There are also these major projects in design and construction. We have the 117th Avenue Streetscape in design, and the Gimme Shelter, the Shade on Pier Street project, which is heading into construction, and we expect to be out on, sort of installed by middle to end of the summer. The other thing that is always important to know, and we're very proud of, is that there are a lot of Arizona workers involved in building the city projects. The old image of an artist working alone in a studio doesn't apply to our situation. There are no solo acts here. We rely on our construction trades, and we have enormously talented construction trades in this city. Bricon Construction and their subcontractors, there are 106 workers that worked on improving this and completing this site at Pueblo Grande. And it was an extraordinary process for those of us who had the privilege to watch behind the scenes unfold. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions about this plan. As Gail mentioned, we'll be back next month with an update on revised budgets for next year.
Are there any questions? Councilman Nowakowski?
I just wanna thank you for all these great programs and keeping the arts alive. But I think what's really important is that people don't realize that even though it's awarded from an artist outside of the state of Arizona, you have 100 and 1,000 artist outside of the state of Arizona, you have 106 individuals that are employed here locally, and that most of the material and most of the work is actually done by individuals that are employed by residents here in local areas. So I just really want to thank you for bringing that out and pointing that out and continuing to build that base of artists locally, too, that some of them have actually springboarded from a project here in the city of Phoenix to other cities throughout the country. So we're starting to be known as a place that produces artists throughout the country. So thank you all for the opportunities you give for local artists to actually show off their art, and at the same time, being able to go to other states and to show off our own artists.
Thank you, councilman. And if I could just add one thing, last week, we held something called the Savvy Workshop, and it was for more than 20 artists, Arizona artists, who were interested in leaving the studio and getting involved in public work. And they actually had the opportunity to meet with some of the contractors we work with to begin to think about how they could build up their projects and scale, and what some of the troubles are and challenges are in that, and how to troubleshoot those. So we'll continue to do these professional workshops for artists to learn how to make the leap from their own studios.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued work. I believe, is it 80% of our project, 80% stays within Arizona and the jobs and local, it goes back into our local economy?
That is correct, Madam Chair. There approximately, of all the projects we've been tracking since I got here about 10 years ago, more than 10 years ago, there are about 80% of all contracted works go toward Arizona contractors, and we'll be updating those numbers for you next month. We'll also be updating some jobs numbers for all of the projects that I showed you that were in motion here this year.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We are moving to item 14, Department Budget Updates. That means Mo Gallegos from Human Services, Rita Hamilton from the Phoenix Public Library, Inger Erickson from Parks and Recreation, and Gail Brown from Arts and Culture. Gail, you lead.
I'll lead us off. Thank you so much. So we have a little bit of a different, shall I lead that off? A little bit of a different format this time on this first sheet to show you, to clarify our adopted budget from 2015 fiscal year and then this year's budget. So in our case, I think this is especially useful to show the difference from year to year. But in terms of just looking at where we are this year with our new budget, we're pretty much on track, maybe a little bit under where we might be. Look at last year, we were 69% of that budget and 62% of this budget. I would say that's perhaps a bit of a lag. We hold, in the cultural facilities section, where we are being very careful about the dollars we spend on the improvements and repairs to those facilities, we're still making some decisions, but we fully expect that the budget will be spent by the end of the year. Not a whole lot of change from last time on the way that our 10 expenditures sort of pencil out in terms of percentages of the total budget. Grants and subsidies will always be at $580,000. This year, our biggest number, followed by salaries, and then items related to the cultural facilities will follow thereon. No changes to grants at this time. We have a number of grants in process that we hope to hear soon on some of those, but those will largely go into next year's fiscal budget. Any questions?
Councilman Nowakowski?
You know, I just think that this is great, that we're showing last year's budget compared to this year's budget. And if you look at it, you're actually about 7% under of where you were last year. I think it's really important that individuals are able to see this, that you all are being good stewards with the tax dollars that individuals are putting into the arts, and that we continue to do that, even though the budget's a little higher this year, almost double. It's because that we're able to generate more monies for the arts and culture. So thank you for all your hard work.
I thank Mary Ling for that revision.
Councilman Waring?
I always think this is a good exercise. Appreciate all the department heads coming. Is it possible, now that there's a trial budget out, maybe you wouldn't be able to do it month by month, I assume, but is there a way to compare to what's proposed for next year? So last year's actual, this year, and then what we're expecting to see for next year?
Chairman and council members, we would probably have to go through the budget process first because there is the trial budget that's out right now. So that shows you the expenditures and what they're looking at in revenues by departments. So are you asking for a side-by-side comparison of what each department is proposing for a budget for next year?
Yes, yes. I would say loosely translated, that's it. I understand you wouldn't necessarily be able to do it line by line, you know, July, August, September, for next year, because you wouldn't have...
Okay, so to simplify it a bit, we would add a 2017 proposed budget, line item at the bottom with the total dollar figure?
Yeah, so, you know, it's, you know, so far, the total is up a little bit for 2016. What are we expecting next year? That's always happy in our budget packets, but this is a smaller version of that. And we get a little more intimate discussion, frankly, and we've got the department heads right here. So it's not totally different than what we do with the bigger group, but I think it's a little more intimate setting to discuss these kind of things.
Right, and I can certainly work with the budget research department.
It was a huge, onerous task, you know, but still, I do think it would be at least as productive to see what we're proposing for next year, now that we have it, versus what was spent last year.
Certainly.
And with the way we're, the way the budget hearings will be rolling out, and the way we're, the methods, the different options in having that dialogue?
Well, actually, thank you for saying that. Can I say one more thing? It would be particularly helpful, obviously you can't do it now for this year, but for next year to have it in March, so we would have that information more specifically and have more dialogue for our budget hearings, which start next month.
Right. Thank you. Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. So as indicated, we're now showing the adopted budgets for this year and the previous year. One of the things I need to say, though, is as the city goes through the year, we do adjustments to the budget, and when the adopted budget is set, there may be funds that are not in there. As an example, with Human Services Department, we received the Early Head Start Child Care Grant, which was not in the adopted budget figures. So consequently, what that, what occurs is, as you see the expenditures being 15.8% above what we did last year, there's two reasons for that. On any given month, there may be a variance because of when invoices are hitting and we are paying. But in addition, the childcare grant amount not being in there, and then having more to spend, if you will, will show throughout the year additional, you know, higher expenditures than the previous year. So that's just one of those things with, in our particular instance, as the city budget hits and we do those adjustments. So, and that's what explains this variance here. Yes?
So, Mo, just some clarification. So a lot of times, we get federal grants that they use your department as like a pass-through, and that's why sometimes you have higher budgets and lower budgets, depending on the grants that we receive from the federal government when it comes to Head Start and other programs like that. Is that correct?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Councilman Nowakowski, in this example that I was describing, when the adopted budget was set at 61.7 million, the early childcare grant that we eventually received had not hit yet. We did not have it in hand. And so as we go through the year, when it comes in, then it goes into the budget. So you'll see those nuances. So, but especially in federal funds, depending on when they hit and when the award letters are received, and when it's put into the budget, you'll see variances like that.
And I think it's really important that we're informed about that, but now that you're live on television, I think it's important that the public understands that, too, that we're waiting for the, sometimes we're waiting for the federal government to actually grant us that grant monies, and that's why sometimes we're off budget.
Thank you, councilman. I was going to say, don't tell me we're live on television. So when we look at the variances, I mean, when we look at the top 10 expenditures, some of the things that we see is in the special contractual, again, because of the Head Start Grant and the higher expenditures, that's what causes that variance there. There's a couple, there's two others in this particular month that we saw hit. One is facilities management being higher than at this time last year, and that's because the, we just posted the cost for upgrading some of the air conditioning units at some of our family service centers. So you see a blip there, if you will. And then in contract custodial, we took over the management of the contracts from public works, and so you see higher expenditures in that particular area as those invoices have hit this particular month of February. In revenues collected, for the most part, things are starting to even out as the year goes on. Again, for the same reason, the grant, the grant collected is showing higher, and that's because of the early childcare grant coming in. And so you'll see that throughout the year.
Any other questions?
Thank you, no. Mo?
No, Mo.
Rita from the Public Library.
Good morning, members of the committee. For the library's budget, you, I'll follow the trend and draw your eye to the adopted last year. And this year, you can see our variance is very insignificant. So essentially, the same budget for both years. And the expenditures continue to vary per month based on the timing of payments for library materials and for public works charges. But they're at the recap, .87 is the variance between the two years, so relatively insignificant. For the top 10 expenditures, salaries continue to be at the top. We have contract custodial services in here making the list a little higher this time because of timing of payments to public works for custodial. And software maintenance is a little higher this time. We have a payment to, a larger payment to innovative interfaces for online system maintenance. And revenues continue the same pattern that we've seen for the rest of the year, with printer copier fees being a little higher collections this year. Any questions?
Rita, Councilman Waring has a question.
Yes, the use of electronic media, does that save the library costs, or will it in the future? I know it's hard to predict where technology's going to go, but, or do we have enough data to make an informed decision on that?
It doesn't necessarily save costs, except in processing of library materials. However, digital materials tend to cost more than print, so it sort of evens out. What we are seeing is that, since there is no loss and they aren't overdue, that fines and fees coming into the library are reduced. But our costs probably wash out in terms of digital materials and print, just because the cost of digital is higher per copy.
Thank you.
Inger Erickson from Parks and Recreation.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, as you can see, our budget is a little bit higher than it was last year, but we are underspent still with that higher amount of money. We're even lower at the percentage point than we were last year, having less money. So we're doing really well on our expenditures, making sure that we manage and monitor that. On this, you'll see that we have been starting to hire our full-time staff, and so we've got a little bit more expenses in that particular category. And then you also see that in the landscape maintenance, there was a timing situation there. We have two months that were accounted for in February last year and only one month this year, and so that's actually lower this year. Our HVAC and roof issues continue to affect us in the facility management areas. And again, some of our facilities are a little bit older, so we're having to replace some of those pieces of equipment. And then the very last one, it's kind of an oddity, but the finance department calculates our auto liability insurance based on our last five years, so it's up slightly. Revenue is collected. We're doing really well here. As you can see, we're higher than we have been in previous years. I will point out the golf. We had some revenue at Maryvale last year, but we don't have any revenue for Maryvale this year, and so that's one of the reasons. So there's about, it's about the same amount of money that we would have received from the Maryvale, but we also are seeing increase in our rent and our concessions. We have new concession vendors at our golf courses, and so we are seeing increased revenues there. The grants, Fit Phoenix by itself has got $145,000 in grants, and so that's one of the reasons. But I think, as I mentioned in previous months, there also was a timing issue with some of our JAG grants and our nutrition grant. And then the last thing I'll mention is the Heritage Square Trust, that's a little bit lower, just because there've been fewer weddings, and we are making some repairs to that facility, which should also then make that facility more desirable for people to have their weddings in and events.
So the tennis center, it's not free, right? You have to pay to play there?
That is correct. That is the Washington Tennis Center. We just made the repairs at that facility, and so the increase to revenue is a result of the operator that we had, we increased his rent. And so that's why it's higher than it was.
I mean, you've got a lot of courts, so that just seems low to me, the 24,000 or the 18,000.
Yeah. So it was based on the negotiated rate that we pay. He pays us a percentage of what he takes in, but then he operates it, so he gets all the tennis instructors, all the operators of the facility, and so that's the agreement.
Is it 10 bucks an hour to play?
It depends on the time, if there's lights.
I also think it depends on the age. I think...
It does, it does. There's a variety of prices depending on not only the day, the time of day, because if you have lights, you have to pay a little bit more, and also if you're paying doubles or playing doubles or singles. And so it depends on how much you're paying to use that court.
So that really represents just a percentage, though?
It's a percentage of...
Of what's actually being taken in?
That's correct, because again, the operator has to pay his own salary to be there, and his staff salary.
And then you talked about the vendors at the golf course. So their revenue is up, but the total revenue is down by 30 grand?
And, well, and that's because we didn't get any revenue from Maryvale. And Maryvale, that's actually a $230,000 difference, so we actually are up.
So it should be up?
Yes.
To the point where, and I forget when I've had my last briefing with you about this, how close are we to actually breaking even?
Well, this year, this year, we're...
Had included in the last presentation you gave me.
I think it was, but this year, we were on track to only use the amount of money that the general fund has given us, which is the 400,000. And then next year, we're supposed to be out of the business of getting any money from the general fund to offset it, and it's supposed to support itself. So we're on track to do that.
Good news. Done? Thank you. That's good news. Alrighty, thank you. Appreciate it. We are on item 15, which is called to the public. I don't have any cards. Does anybody have any future items? Uh-huh. Councilman Nowakowski?
Kind of going off what Jim Waring was talking about is, can we actually have maybe a 15 to 20-minute presentation from each of the departments on their proposed budget, so we can kind of understand it? Sort of like an internal director's audit of what programs are cutting, why they're cutting it, and why these programs are important to keep, and why they made those decisions that they did. I think it's really important for us to understand that. So when we're out there in the community and they're saying, well, hey, we need this certain program in our community, our library hours at this community, this library open, not this one and this and that, we can kind of understand the director's opinion or why they made those decisions. Sort of like a little report on the budget itself, so we can understand it as committee members. And at the same time, when we go out there in the community, we can actually support those decisions and support the budget that they came up with, or if we can tweak it, maybe we can even help tweak it a little bit, too.
So may I suggest that either to have those department heads meet one-on-one, or we could, those that want to meet can meet with the department heads. I don't, Deanna?
Chairwoman, members of the subcommittee, I'm just not certain, because a lot of these programs span citywide, so I can certainly take that suggestion back to the city manager for a briefing from the department specifically on the proposed cuts and the desire for some of the members to want to get a briefing on those specifically, and how they came to that particular cut in each of the areas.
Okay, if you could let me know, because I don't, I'm not sure if that would be an agenda item.
Well, you know, I have a problem with that, because if we're going to be actually voting on a budget, we need to understand that budget completely. So I believe that as a director of a department and sitting on the subcommittee, I would actually like to listen to the reasoning, the whys and the hows, and the importance of... of those programs. Because I think, once we're educated and doing it during the subcommittee, we're educating the public out there, because you have advocates for different areas of, let's say, the parks that are advocating for a certain area of a park, but at the same time, we have hikers and we have individuals that have playgrounds, soccer leagues, et cetera, et cetera. And sometimes we get caught up in our, in our budget hearings with advocacy group that we really don't understand that there's a bigger picture, and that there are little leagues here, and there's soccer leagues here, and there's tennis courts here, and that they all play a major, or an advocacy group for golf courses. Then we can kind of understand the director's vision, and we can help with that vision.
So Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, just so I can clarify, are you asking for an overview from each of the departments on their proposed budget submittals for the trial budget?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Our next meeting is April...
April 27.
Yeah, and we're going to be...
And we're making, we're voting on the budget, isn't it, three times? Once in May, again in June, and I think the last one's in July.
Can I say something while we're all looking?
For ourselves, I think that's, that's important for me as a, on my vote when we approve a budget.
Yeah. Okay.
May I?
Yes.
So I appreciate Councilman Nowakowski's comments. Basically, what he suggests is what was done at the legislature, you know, with the Appropriations Committee, you know, not the entire body. It was certain subset of members would hear different government agencies and programs and so forth would come in and sort of explain where their budget's at. We do have a trial budget now, so I appreciate his intent to do it this year. My comments are more like, hey, next year, at our March meeting, maybe we could hear from the department heads that report, maybe is too strong a word, but come to us on a monthly basis. I certainly would be interested in getting their thoughts. I know we can do it individually, but, you know, sometimes, frankly, I find it helpful. It may shock you guys to hear this. You guys ask a question, and I piggyback on that, as we just saw sometimes. Again, I, you know, hearing it from different perspectives makes me think of a question. I think, I think that's always the more helpful discussion to me than just sitting in an office one-on-one, plus the public is to see it as well. But I guess I'd like to hear next year their reactions to the trial budget, and also, my original comment was in comparison to what's gone before. What are we doing this year? What did we do last year? We do that at the main council meeting, but we usually only do it with the city manager and maybe a couple deputies. There isn't, or at least there has not been, in my tenure here, which is shorter than some of the folks here, has not been as focused on department heads, sort of explaining, here's why we're talking about cutting this, or here's why we're adding to that, or here's why this is necessary, and then letting, we've had citizens come in and complain about the lack of park rangers, for example, is one example. So then they would get to say, no, no, the rangers are really important. I mean, I don't see why that would violate the spirit of us doing it at the bigger meeting, and I think it's a good idea. So it does take it a step further than what I had suggested, but I'm all for it.
So I think it will be helpful. Deanna, you and I will discuss or see how we can get it by the April...
Okay.
The 27th date. See if that's possible and get to that point.
And if I can say one, and I recognize this maybe just be, you know, wind up being for next year, where it's practical. I would say something, too, because I think Mo, or Low, is...
I said no.
Or no. It was a lot, but all right, whatever. So no Low, it would seem concerned a little bit about, you know, us coming back and kind of going, gotcha, you told us the numbers would be this. We understand it's a trial budget, not the main budget. We understand that all the grants are in. I certainly understand that. So if you get more revenue because you applied for something, you know, great, but at least it gives us some sort of in-context discussion, which I frankly have criticized our budgets in the past, because I don't think that always happens, so thank you.
Well, thank you. So we will work on that item. I do, before we adjourn, would like to wish my Sofia a happy birthday, as she shares that birthday with my sister, so happy birthday to you, and Councilman Waring's boys next week, happy birthday also. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.